Welcome to Word of Mouth in Dartmouth. Today, we're covering Springtown Meeting. I'm Magnolia McComish, the town's communications coordinator. Today, we're bringing in department heads and board and committee members to hash out the Springtown Meeting articles, one by one. Springtown Meeting is on June 3rd, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Dartmouth High School, located at 555 Bakersville Road. While only town meeting representatives can cast votes, anyone is welcome to join in person or online through the Dartmouth Community Media livestream. We have 27 regular town meeting articles to get through, so let's get started. Our first guest today is Community Preservation Committee Chairman Buddy Baker-Smith. Thank you so much for being here, Buddy.
Well, thank you for having me. You know, it's a great opportunity to talk a little bit about the warrant articles. And, you know, I'm looking forward to it.
Me too. So like at every town meeting, the CPC has money to allocate for projects. This year is certainly no different with four CPC articles. Article one looks to be pretty straightforward. It's asking to appropriate $35,000 for administrative expenses from the 2025 Community Preservation Fund Annual Reserves. Buddy, where does that money come from? And where does it go?
Oh, great question, because people see this kind of on pretty much every June town meeting. The Community Preservation Act allows the Community Preservation Committee to set aside up to 5% of the projected revenues for its administrative purposes. For us, that means admin support. We pay for our own legal services with town council. We might at times need consultation if we're evaluating projects, things like that.
So it sounds like it helps the committee be self-sustaining.
That's right. Yes, exactly. We've kept the amount of our budget at $35,000 really over the years because we found that that has been really more than adequate most times. So the $35,000 this year represents actually about 3.3% of our projected revenue, but we really don't need more than that. Anything that we don't spend just goes into our general reserves that are available for projects in the future.
All right. Article two seems to be pretty similar. It asks to reserve $255,000 from the 2026 Community Preservation Fund annual revenues for later appropriation.
The Community Preservation Act requires that communities set aside 10% for each of the three purposes. There'd be historic preservation, open space, and housing. You can either commit or set aside at least 10% of your projected revenues. So when you look at our warrant article, we've got $110,000 for housing, $110,000 for recreation, and then $35,000 for historic preservation. The reason for that is the 110 represents our projection of what 10% would cover the 10% requirement. We've got two warrant articles that are historic preservation that total $75,000. So if you're anticipating the town meeting may approve those, then we would meet our $110,000 commitment by those two projects, plus setting aside another $35,000. If, for whatever reason, town meeting did not approve them in June, we would make an adjustment in our reserves at the October town meeting.
All right. That's good to know. It was interesting seeing the number be lower. And then if you just look ahead to two articles, the math, it does add up to get back up to that number, so.
Yeah, you wouldn't necessarily understand that if you didn't get the whole picture.
Yep. Yeah, just the one article on its own is hard to tell, but once we bring in the next two, it's going to make perfect sense. So that being said, Article three is where the projects start. So the first project is Phase Two of the DCTV renovations. This project asks for $25,000 of CPC historical preservation money to be approved for, quote, "development of bid documents for repairs and restoration," quote, at this, at this building, right here, actually. And can you tell us a little bit about what makes this building historic? What work might have been done in Phase One? And what we can expect for this money to be used for Phase Two?
Yep. That's kind of, one of the fun things about the CPC, when people bring projects like this for consideration, you also get a chance to learn something about things like this building. So to my surprise, and maybe, maybe to people in the town, this building was built in 1894. I would not have thought that.
Especially surrounded by so much technology right now, you wouldn't think.
Exactly, exactly. And it's, we have historic building inventory. It's been completed for this property some years ago. You can find it in the Massachusetts Registry of Historic Properties. So yeah, it was built in 1894 as the Town Hall. It's described as a shingle-style construction that was typical of the turn of the century, I guess, along the Atlantic coast, which now I know nothing about architecture, so this is kind of what I've learned. Has a lot to do with the roof lines, obviously the shingle kind of exterior, things like that, features that still exist today in this building, even though there's been a lot of changes inside. And so the town has actually had its eye on taking care of needed repairs and improvements and restoration of this building for some time now. And there's been some studies and assessment of what the conditions of the building are, what needs to be fixed over the years. The town, DCTV, have been doing some repairs and improvements, clearly a lot of interior work. But they're really getting to some of the major elements of the building, like the exterior, like some window work, some foundation kind of work that needs to be done. And so this, the funds here that are being requested would retain the services of an architectural firm with historic preservation experience, to look at what the condition surveys to date have been, kind of confirm those conditions, and then draw up a scope of work to have these elements and remaining kind of important aspects of this building that needs repair and restoration kind of laid out in both design and the bid documents. So the town, at the end of, if with this fund, these funds, the town would have, be on the, at this stage where they could put the work out to bid and then figure out how to pay for it and, and all of that. But they've got to do this step first.
So it sounds like we're probably going to see more DCTV projects with CPC in the future. So this is going to sort of figure out what needs to get done and at what urgency and at what specs. And then, in the future, those projects will start to get completed.
That's right. Yeah, which is why I think this is accurately described for the town as a phase, so Phase Two. And, but it should give the town the information, both on what, what needs to be done and how much that might cost by putting it out to bid, so.
So Article Four is another historical preservation project, like we said it would be. It asks for $50,000 of CPC funding to be allocated towards gravestone and wall restoration at the Joseph Davis Cemetery. Can you tell me more about this project?
Yeah, again, something that you learn in this job, which is great, which is there is a very historic, maybe nearly one of the original cemeteries in town next to the Lazy Boy Store on Font's Corner Road.
Up in North Dartmouth.
Easy to drive right by, which I've done for years, but it's there. Judy Lund, town resident, historian in particular, has studied and surveyed cemeteries in town. She's really an expert on that in particular. Has worked with Parks and Recreation and brought this proposal for a project to restore the cemetery. There are about 260 grave sites there, I think dating way back to the late 1700s. And it's surrounded by a stone wall. Almost, pretty much all of the gravestones need some cleaning. Over the years, lichen and other things have kind of covered the stones.
You'll see that at any cemetery you go to. You'll see some level of weathering on the stones.
That's right. Yeah. And there are about 69 stones that are damaged. Now, they may be cracked, they might be tilted on their pedestal, or literally they're, they have fallen over. There's a few, we had the photograph, we looked at there. A few are just kind of leaning up against the corner wall. And so this project will, one, clean all of the stones. And there's a process that's been used in the town of Westport that's been very successful, cleaning the stones in a manner that does not cause any further damage. And so I think the intent is to use this very similar, if not the same, process for cleaning these stones, experience, hiring experienced people to do that. And then repairing those 69 stones, getting them back and upright where they belong. And then there's a section of the stone wall that is unstable. If I remember correctly, it's because some trees are growing right next to it, so it's pushing the stones over. This is a dry stone wall. So that's exciting. The town has a lot of cemeteries. So it'd be really interesting to see how this project really kind of restores that, that particular one.
Yeah, maybe make it stand out a little more amongst all of the industry up there.
Yeah, it might encourage some people to take a walk around there.
Exactly.
Which is always interesting, walking around these really old cemeteries.
All right. Well, Buddy, thank you so much for coming today and telling us about the CPC articles we can expect on the warrant and really just sharing some of the history and excitement behind the projects.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, I really appreciate that you organized this whole kind of show or interview. You know, town meeting members get a packet of information. But I think what, what happens at town meeting is everybody's business, whether you're a town meeting member or not. And everybody contributes to the Community Preservation Fund in town. And it's been very important to us that these funds get invested in the town, into real projects, because that's where you really get the tangible benefit of the CPA. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to kind of share a little bit about what's, what's on the horizon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take things a bit out of order so that we can keep all the Select Board and Finance-related articles in the second part of the show. So we're going to jump ahead to Article 17 on page 14 of your town meeting warrant. To look at Article 17, I have invited Heidi Silva-Brooks, who is co-chair of DART, Dartmouth Advocates for Addiction Recovery and Treatment, to talk us through the article. Thank you for being here, Heidi.
Thank you for having me, Meg.
Of course. So I see that this article is asking to appropriate $435,000 from the Opioid Legal Settlements Stabilization Fund for fiscal year '26. Can you tell us about where this money comes from and why it needs to be an article on town meeting?
Absolutely. Town meeting members may remember that we've had several, several articles in the past. The opioid settlement fund money is, was established through the actions of our Attorney General at the time, which was Maura Healy, going after Big Farmer. And that, along with subsequent settlements with drug stores and like Walgreens and CVS, Rite Aid, all of those went into the fund that gave us this opioid settlement distribution. So we will be receiving as a Dartmouth, as the Dartmouth community, funds every year through 2038. The goal of DART is to use those funds for education, recovery, and treatment, and to spread it out throughout those years, as well as taking it, having that resource available to us beyond 2038. So far, we've established the fund so that the money can go from the state right into the opioid settlement funding line item. And then whenever we need money, DART needs to go to town meeting to ask the money to be moved from that stabilization fund into an account where we can draw it down. The last time we did that was two years ago, and we asked for $80,000 at the time. We have done a couple of events. The International Overdose Awareness Night that we have done for two years, money from there went into that. Now, we've moved on. We've done a needs assessment. We've talked to other groups within the town and to find out what they would need in addressing the issues that go along with addiction.
So you just covered a lot there, so I'm going to summarize. So we, there was a few different lawsuits that resulted in funding given to the state, which they allocated, which is how Dartmouth ends up with this money. It's allocated based on these lawsuits. It's not really taxpayer dollars. It's lawsuit money that's given to the town. And now, DART takes that money and allocates it for, like you're saying, education, prevention, and other awareness events, like we saw with the overdose awareness day event, which was spectacular, a very, very good event to talk about something so difficult and so important in our community. And now, with this particular article, how is this money coming into play?
So clearly, going from asking $80,000 to $435,000 is a huge jump, but we have made some huge gains, working with the school department, the police department, the library, the social outreach committee, in identifying what do we need for the residents of Dartmouth. So we're looking that we do not necessarily want to come before town meeting every year, so we're hoping the funds we've asked for now will take us for a couple of years. So I don't expect us to be back next June, perhaps the following June, June of 2027. Right now, the things that we are putting our money towards is we are in the process of hiring a substance use program coordinator. And how that, the funds will, will work there is, at this point, in the first year, 100% of the person's salary would come out of the DART funds. Then every year, 10% of that salary will be put, will be contributed through town funds. So that 10 years down the line, it will become a position funded within the town over time. That will also give that position the ability to do more and more each year for other events within town. The opioid settlement funding money has very specific guidelines on what it can be used for. So this program coordinator will establish some events, but then every year, we'll be able to also work with some other needs that we have within our community.
To that point, I want to point out that this position isn't going to come out of the general budget this year.
No.
Because it's coming out of this opioid settlement monies.
Right. So it's not going to be part of Schedule A at all.
Yep.
The next thing we're doing is we're going to be buying nalox boxes. Now, those would be boxes similar to an AED that would be on the wall. And within the box would be containers of naloxone or Narcan. We're going to be doing training with our town employees. This is similar to the training that already takes place in the school department. So right now, every school has Narcan. The nurse and the employees within that school are trained annually and know how to access it. We need the same thing on the town side.
So these boxes would be in the municipal administrative buildings in addition to where they're already at the schools.
Exactly. We'll also be training everyone. So they know either how to administer it and that it, it's available.
And can you just, for people who don't know, can you say what the Narcan is or does?
Sure. Narcan is a nasal spray. It looks much like a Flonaze that is administered to someone who is having a reaction to an overdose of opioids. And it attaches itself to the opioid receptors, the receptors in the brain, cancels that, that opioid reaction out and brings them to. Sometimes it takes more than one dose. The training would say, just much like EpiPen training, you, you grab the EpiPen or you grab the Narcan, but you also have someone calling 911, so you can get medical help there. The reversal of opioid overdose allows that individual to potentially seek help and recover from their addiction. In death, there is no second chance. This provides loved ones with a second chance. It's also something, there's a multitude of ways that folks who are concerned about loved ones in their home can get Narcan. And to that, you know, call the local police department, call Dolores Joseph, the youth advocate, call the Board of Health, and speak to someone there. All of those folks can get you resources for Narcan. It's a judgment-free zone, you know, get it, have it on hand. In fact, now we're seeing that as opioids are being distributed legally through a doctor, through a pharmacy, that they are also prescribing Narcan along with it, just in case. Some people get confused on their medication, and they may take too much and may need Narcan. So it's becoming a part of the way we do business, so it's a little bit different.
These boxes will be posted or put up in these town buildings without stigma. And just, just in case for anyone who may need it, people will know how to address that.
There won't be an alarm. There is an alarm on an AED because that way, everybody knows there's a problem. The Narcan wouldn't be alarmed. You'd be able to take it. Even if you came into a place of business and know that you needed it, you could take it out of that without alarms going off and take it home. And then we will be working on replenishing those. So that's one of our, our bigger pieces. Also establishing, we have a post-overdose program with the police department. And so when the police department is notified that a resident of Dartmouth has had an overdose, they go to the home within the first couple of days to offer the family resources and the individual resources. And that's any number of things. It's to get them into treatment. It's to check in to see how the family's doing. This is a family disease. And we're supporting that post-overdose program through DART funds. I've just recently spoken to one of the officers that's in charge of organizing that to see, you know, how are we doing? We put a sum of money, you know, was it an accurate sum of money? And so we'll be adjusting that every year to see, you know, more or less, how much money we need there.
The thing with this opioid settlement money is it's all very new. All of these communities are learning at the same time and taking different routes to try and use it. So it's, it's not like we're necessarily inventing the wheel, but the path is not yet laid for what to do with this funding.
Right. And every community will use it differently. For example, communities that already have halfway houses, sober living establishments in their community, may be directing the funds there. We have neither. So we're looking at other ways. And we're really focusing on education and prevention. So in education, we're working with the school department. We are funding the Wayfinder Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, which is a digital platform, and it's going to be used with our high school students next year. Eventually, it may be something, they will, you know, look at the success rate of that. It may be something we also use at our middle school. It gives people a way to communicate. We're also expanding the safety program at the high school by, with DART funds, supporting an additional safety officer, which is not a police officer. This would be someone, a security guard. But just, we're trying to establish a conversation rather than look at this punitive, that enough faces are around. If, if kids, if adults have questions, there are going to be people to talk to. We're also going to expand the after-school program within the school department. We've worked really closely with members of the school department to identify what's needed. And what we see is there are lots of options at the high school. There are some options at the middle school. However, unless you have a way for, to be transported after hours, you can't participate. That's not fair. Some of the kiddos that need to have an extracurricular activity need transportation. So we're actually looking at contracting for that transportation out of the DART funds, expanding offerings at the high school. They have a great, I mean, kids that go to the high school know if they're going into the sports program, the music program, the drama program. They also have a gazillion little clubs up there with advisors. And they're also willing to establish more clubs. We want that to happen. We also want it to happen at the middle school. And in the future, maybe we'll be able to get it to the elementary school. What we know is that when kids have time on their hands and are looking for something to do, they may experiment. What we know about addiction is the first time you try it is a choice. Once you try it, if you have what we refer to as the allergy to that substance and you seek that substance, it's no longer a choice. Your body is asking for that. We want to kid kids other healthy choices. We want them to have opportunities to talk to each other. And in those discussions, to have caring adults who are also there for them. And so part of the Substance Use Program Coordinator's position will be to be that face at the high school and the middle school. Kids may have questions because they may have a relative or a friend that's experimenting, and they don't know how to support them. My concern, in addition to addiction and folks that do have substance use disorder, are the folks involved with recreational drug use. I think it's a misnomer to say marijuana is legal in Massachusetts, to the point that if you're buying your marijuana at a dispensary, that is monitored, have at it. But if you're buying it on the street, it's going to be laced. What they are finding, when they find someone who is overdosed and death resulting, they confiscate the drugs that are there and they send them to be tested. And what they're finding is that everything is laced, potentially with fentanyl, with other synthetic drugs. And that could be what's leading to the death. Nothing is just marijuana. Nothing is just cocaine. So anyone with recreational drug use for fun, we need them to do something else for fun that will give them that same high. We're also purchasing additional vape detectors for the high school. Vaping is also one of those gateways. It may start with a simple water base, but it may evolve to a THC-based vaping. And so we want to be able to counsel the kids. This isn't to get punitive. This is to, why are you doing this? Do you know the scientific effects on your lungs? A teachable moment. We're also creating two DART resources, or rather, recovery resource areas at the libraries, Southworth Library and the North Branch Library, through funds with DART. We're working with the head librarian and the library trustees to make sure that they approve the book choices that we have. And to be realistic, this is probably not a resource area that someone in addiction is going to seek out. But we want it to be the loved ones who say, I don't know what to do and where can I go? And you can go and read books about addiction to educate yourself. Read books by former addicts who tell us how they've turned their life around. There is no one way. What works for one person doesn't work for someone else. And we really need to just normalize that conversation. And so I, as a member of the Select Board, as a former educator in the town of Dartmouth, as a parent of someone with eight years of sobriety, I and my family have agreed that part of that 12th step is that you give back to your community. And so by my involvement with DART, that's what we're doing. And I'm proud of the work, work we're doing with DART. And I can see, once you know, you know. And so I see that over time, our list currently would be for about $250,000, what I've just described. We're asking for $435, as I said. We're asking to use this over several years, so.
All right. That was very informative.
Thank you.
We touched on a lot of important topics there, a range of, of tools that the DART committee is identifying, and a lot of ways to attack this, this problem, really, and a way to prevent it and remove the stigma from it.
Right.
All right. Another group that you're involved in is DSCOT.
Yes.
And that is a group that relates to our next article we're going to go over, which is Article 21, which establishes a camping bylaw within the general town bylaws. Can you give us an overview of what this article is and what it's hoping to do and why the town? Can you give us an overview of what this article is and what it's hoping to do and why the town feels a need for it?
I'm going to start with the why. Now, DSCOT is the Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team. It's a team of folks from the fire department, the police department, the Council on Aging, Amy DePietro as well as Matt Dansero, who is our outreach coordinator for the town, the Board of Health, the public health nurse, the youth advocate, veteran service agent, communications, Select Board Liaison, member of the DART team. So there's a, a large group and we've been meeting monthly for quite a while. They met for possibly a year before I got involved and talked about what are they seeing? You know, what kind of cases is Matt processing? People that are looking for his services are looking for help with insurance. How do I get on Mass Health? What are my options? Also, insurance, also job possibilities and housing. And when Matt gets that data and shares it with DSCOT, we look at it and really are like, what are the questions and what lens can we answer that from? And by having people from all these different areas, there are always resources that somebody else knows about. The outreach team, working with, through the federal government's PIT count, which is the point in time count, that happens every January. It's a date set by the federal government and every community sends an outreach team out into town-owned lands, parking lots, you know, visible areas as well as invisible areas, looking for folks that are unhoused. There's a myriad of reasons why people are unhoused. And once they take that count and our first meeting after that, and we talk about the numbers and we talk about the numbers going up from previous years, we were at seven single-digit numbers. We're now into double-digit numbers. We're at 27 this year. And what are we going to do about it? Very happy to report that as of today, the unhoused population on Dartmouth-owned property is zero. That is because the outreach team has gone out and worked with these individuals to secure housing. That housing could be an apartment. That housing could be a shelter. The housing even could be to get them to return to a family setting that they may have left for a number of reasons. There's more reasons than you can imagine why people end up in that situation. Some are bad breakups and they have nowhere else to go. Some, it's a myriad of mental health issues, potentially addiction issues, trauma history, that they feel safer there than they do elsewhere. The outreach team then talks them, talks to them and talks about how they can assist them to, to get into a safer place. Of course, this is a huge problem during the, the winter months when it's so cold. And our shelters are limited to us. This camping bylaw goes, has been sent to town meeting, not for punishment in any way, but in having those conversations, we needed something that told folks, you need to make a choice. And so having, this is different than sort of adjusted no trespass order. We are fine with people trespassing on town property. We want them to hike it. We want them to bike it. We want them to take their families and explore for passive recreation. What we don't want is people to build a shelter and create a home there. It's not safe. When we hear from the police department of potential fires that they have had, that they've had to gone into the woods, we've seen what wildfires can do. We don't want that to happen in Dartmouth. The police, sometimes people are involved with drug use, active drug use. The police go in because maybe different individuals from different campsites have stolen each other's property. It becomes a police matter. And what really was a tipping point to us is some of this housing is very close to, on Dartmouth property, to aquifers and well areas. And most recently, now that we have taken stock and looked where people were camping, we have sites that we need to send in professional cleaning agencies. It's beyond the scope of what our typical DPW workers could do. We've got human waste. We've got medical waste. We have drug paraphernalia. And we have the contents left behind of what was their home. We need all of that taken away. During the DSCOT outreach, they are told, when you leave this site, take everything that's meaningful to you. Because when you come back, it will be taken away, never to be seen again.
It's going to be remediated.
Remediated, exactly. And there's a lot of emotion to that. And we have seen other communities where they just come in and bulldoze it away. You're not bulldozing the problem away. And as hard as it is to imagine, that is someone's home.
I think it's so important to, to reiterate your point that this bylaw is in, in tandem with our outreach coordinator and the efforts that, that they're doing in that group to make sure that we're not, just like you're saying, bulldozing people away from a situation that they, they need support to, to navigate.
We had an opportunity that in all honesty, when we had this aha moment, when we spoke to this one, and I say we, it wasn't me, it was a member of the outreach team, was able to say to the person, Dartmouth community says you can't stay on this property anymore. We're giving you till the end of the week to make a decision. And they had, sign here, we can help you with housing. Do this. The person ended up going back to their family. But we did feel that having this as sort of that final push. There is in the bylaw a financial fine. That has gone back and forth with the police department and our town lawyer, do we or don't we? And in all honesty, it's there because people take a fine a little bit more seriously. It is not, what, we do not want to fine people. We don't want to incarcerate people. We want to put them into a safe place. And we're hoping that that piece, that piece of paper does that. We also feel by having a bylaw, that all town properties will be treated the same. Right now, if there's someone on camping on Parks and Rep property, the school department property, the Council on Aging property, all these different properties, every department sort of wanted to handle it a little bit different. And what we really need is town property, here's the bylaw, we handle it all the same on town property.
So I think it's important to stress that this is an issue of safety and an issue to make sure that problems don't transpire into bigger problems like you're saying with our waterways, to make sure that that all remains safe and clean and people are able to get the support and help they need when they're, they find themselves in these situations. And it gives the town a resource to be able to say, you can't stay here, but we have resources to help you in that situation. And like you're saying, the fine isn't there to, to hurt people while they're down. It's to just give a little backing to say, there's a little motivation here to get, to help us help you.
Right. And in the end, as we said, it's to make sure people are housed and do have the resources that they need. This is solely for Dartmouth property. It's only for the public property. It has nothing to do with private property. Are there homeless individuals currently on private properties? Yes. We're protecting the town property. Right now, looking at the site that we need to remediate, we're looking about a $20,000 remediation for one site. That's a big chunk of change. And so we really want people to know we're there to help. We have the resources. And we can do this.
All right. Well, that's all we've got to discuss. Thank you so much for being here and being so informed on these really complex, important issues that the town faces.
Thank you. They are, they are. Nothing's easy these days.
Well, I'll see you at town meeting.
Thank you.
We're going to move to Article 18. For this, we have Peter Chase, Dartmouth's Director of Media. Thanks for being here, Pete.
Thanks. It's great to be in front of the camera for once.
Yep. So this article is asking to appropriate $45,000 from the Dartmouth Cable Television Stabilization Fund for fiscal year 2026 to use for capital expenditures at the DCTV headquarters where we are now. Can you tell me a little bit about what this means?
So this article is going to fund a few different projects around the building. One of them is the upkeep of the outside of the building. The, the shingles haven't been replaced in many years. Foundation work. So we're going to have a study done, or re-looked at. We had a study done in 2016 and they came up with a whole list of things to repair. We've, we've kind of hit some of those and so now we're just trying to finalize it and finish the job. So we want to look at the shingles, make sure, you know, they're not any worse than it was in the past. And so they're, they're supposed to do the study and then also do all the bid documents and get it ready to move forward to hopefully be funded for next year.
So is this in tandem with the CPC article we heard about earlier?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. So the CPC is putting $25,000 towards it. The study was going to cost just under 30, so 5,000 of the, of the 45 is, is towards that. The other part of the funding that we're looking to do is we have our big production truck, which we've been storing offsite for many years since we, since we had it. And, you know, rent deciding to get a little expensive, also locations deciding to be a little bit of a problem because we're doing more and more with it. So, you know, having it close by. So we want to put up a small, you know, Shelter Logic is basically, it's a hard plastic kind of garage. And we hope to put that on the, right behind us, behind our parking lot, on the, on the land that the town owns.
So that'll really just make it more convenient to have the, the big truck that you bring to events. That really is like a mobile version of this building. You can have it easy to access, easy to load and prepare for those events by having it onsite.
Correct, correct. And then also we look to update our generator inside of it to, we hope to do more of an electric generator, not a gas-powered generator. So with that, we would need a place to be able to charge it. In the current location, we don't have any kind of utility. So, so here we'd be able to charge it overnight, be ready to go for a production out, you know, covering events throughout the town.
All right. Anything else we need to know about in this article?
Nope, that is it. It's pretty straightforward and it comes from our stabilization account, which was created many years ago before we became an enterprise fund. We're trying to just dwindle that down because now we just keep retained earnings versus stabilization. So it's a different way that we save money, but we, we stop putting into the stabilization fund. So we're just really trying to close out that account.
Yeah, so transfer over fully to your enterprise fund. And so we got good projects to do. Why not use the money available?
Great.
All right. Thanks for being here, Pete.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The final article we're going to take out of order is Article 26 on page 18 of the warrant. This article discusses the possibility of a license-to-carry exclusion for municipal administrative buildings on town property. To cover this article, I am joined by Dartmouth Chief of Police, Brian Lebec. Great to have you here, Chief.
Great to be here. Thank you.
Of course. Thanks for coming. So can you tell me a little bit about this article and where it comes from?
Sure. So that article is a result of an act, Modernizing Firearms, that was signed into law July 25th of last year and went into effect on October 2nd. By default, the law prohibits possession of firearms in municipal buildings. However, the law also allows for towns to exempt their buildings. And that's what the article is about. By voting yes on this article, it would restore the ability of licensed gun owners to carry in-town buildings as they have been able to do for the last 360 years in Dartmouth.
All right. So there's been a lot of talk about the security concerns around this, this article, especially with some buildings and their proximity to school buildings. So for example, Town Hall is right next to, or it's really sandwiched between the field and the middle school. So how does that come into play with this article?
Sure. So just to be clear, in the article, it has, it has no impact on schools, school grounds. That would remain to be prohibited from carrying any kind of firearms regardless of the outcome of this article. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, Massachusetts has some of the most restrictive gun laws in the nation. And Dartmouth currently has over 4,700 licensed gun owners. And in order to get an LTC in the state, you need to go through an extensive fingerprint-based background check. We also continually monitor the license-to-carry that we have issued and revoke them upon any type of, you know, violations that would warrant a revocation. So these people have, have been thoroughly vetted and are continually monitored to be licensed gun owners. And that's really what we're talking about here is licensed gun owners, not criminals obviously carrying in these buildings. That's already prohibited. The law itself, like many laws in this particular case, does nothing to actually prevent someone from carrying a firearm in these buildings. There are, there are going to be no metal detectors that I'm aware of, no armed security. My fear is that this almost provides a false sense of security to the people inside of these buildings while also unfairly restricting our licensed gun owners. And I'm not aware of any instances in town buildings that had any kind of firearms-related problems up to this point.
So a conversation we've been having in some of the town buildings is how is this article, if it's passed, going to impact employees' ability to carry if they are a licensed carrier?
Sure. So depending on the outcome of the article, they would be subject to the state law like, like anyone else would be. However, in addition to that, they're subject to, like many employers, policies. I believe the town's policy currently restricts their ability to carry while they're working, but I would confirm that with Human Resources.
All right. And so the Select Board did put out a survey to employees to gauge their feedback. And that's going to be, those results will be delivered to the Select Board ahead of town meeting.
Okay. So I do appreciate, you know, the town considering employees' opinions on topics like this in, in the buildings they work in. At the same time though, I, I am opposed to public employees affecting the exercise of constitutionally protected rights inside of public buildings essentially. You know, how, how would the public react if town employees voted to restrict what they could say in these buildings? Or even the right of the, the press to conduct business inside of these buildings?
To that point, I will clarify, this is really just a, a survey to gauge interest and some information on how staff are feeling. It has no bearings on how meeting members, their right to vote.
And it is to be clear too, you know, the outcome of this article does affect the police station because it is a municipal building like Town Hall and many other buildings around town.
All right. Is there anything else you think town meeting members should know when voting on this article?
Yeah, I, I guess just in closing, some interesting statistics. When I was looking into this, so Dartmouth is ranked 14th out of the 351 communities in the state as far as the total number of license-to-carry that we issue. I then took that number because I noticed that most of the communities that had more than we did were cities. So I broke it down by population and when you adjust for population, Dartmouth then ranks number two per 1,000 residents. And the top three cities and towns are extremely close within a decimal place of each other. So I would just, I think that's important for town meeting members to be aware of because many of the people in the districts they represent are probably gun, licensed gun owners in the town.
All right. And you had mentioned before that it's a rigorous process to get this license. And that's not just in Dartmouth, correct? That's what it's like in every municipality?
Yeah, it's a state process that, that we, we have, you know, in town. And under this law, so we're talking about, you know, this law and how it affects municipal buildings. But this law was about 116 pages of legislation. And it also restricted, further restricted people's ability to even, first of all, get in the LTC. It put, you know, additional requirements on them in training. Many additional training requirements that are still being rolled out because they're quite extensive.
And that's for the applicant?
That's for the applicant who needs to complete not only the background check, but also the training requirements prior to being able to carry a, have an LTC and carry a firearm.
Very interesting. This article has brought up a lot of good, interesting conversation around the protocol and, and what goes into it. And also highlights the work that the, the police department's doing to ensure that these licenses are distributed responsibly.
Yeah, definitely. Our licensing officer works, works very hard because to issue this number and keep track of this amount of people.
All right. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to, to come here today and talk through this article and make sure our meeting members are informed.
Great. Thank you. And hopefully this was helpful.
We're going to spend the rest of the show with interim town administrator Gary Carrero. He's going to cover the finance and Select Board articles and anything else that pops. He's going to cover the finance and Select Board articles and anything else that pops up. Hi Gary, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you, Magne, for having me. It's a pleasure being here to talk about the FY26 warrant.
Yeah. So Article Five, which is on page four for those following along in the warrant, asks for two thousand dollars from the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund to be spent on cemetery purposes. Can you talk a bit about what cemetery purposes are and what the Cemetery Lot Fund is?
This fund has been around quite some time. It's for the upkeep and maintenance of certain headstones within the cemeteries around town. And this is a boilerplate article that's in every town meeting that appropriates around two thousand dollars for that purpose.
Okay, so Article Six looks to establish a maximum spending budget for revolving funds in fiscal year 2026. It looks like there are three revolving funds. The Cemetery Revolving Fund, the Recreation and Parks Revolving Fund, and the Library Fund for Lost or Damaged Items. Can you tell me about how these funds work and why they need to be established by town meeting?
So again, at a town meeting in the past, the town voted to have these set up as revolving funds so that the funds that come in and the revenue that comes into these funds can be used back to us for operations in those departments. And what town meeting does is sets the limits to that every year.
So Article Seven is a little bit different. This article looks to rescind the authority to borrow previously authorized unissued debt comprised of amounts approved at previous town meetings. Article Seven goes on to list the specific articles with unused debt, their purpose and the amount to rescind. Can you explain what's going on here?
Sure. So town meeting hasn't seen an article to rescind votes in a little bit of time. So what this does is if you look at the article specifically, you'll see warrant article numbers and the dates of the town meeting that voted the appropriations for these projects. This is not cash per se. This is the authorization to borrow up to a certain amount of money. These projects did not reach that threshold. So we're cleaning up the ledger, if you will, to bring these off the books and make them go away on the ledger.
So this isn't money that exists currently? This is the idea that we could use this much money for a project?
For these specific projects, correct.
All right. So moving right along, Article Eight asks town meeting to accept the Capital Planning Committee Report of Capital Needs for Fiscal Year 26 and to fund them from three accounts. These accounts are surplus revenues, sewer retained earnings and solid waste retained earnings. Can you talk me through what's going on in this article?
Sure. So Article Eight, we go back to the fall town meeting where the town was certified around six-point-nine million dollars in free cash. The majority of the capital that's funded through the warrant is funded by free cash. So we had a huge outlay at that time. This, there was additional monies left over, so you'll see that this article is a little bit smaller. The items for the police department like tasers, item for truck faults, to firearms protection, when they are not in the vehicle, they need to protect the firearms. Also, technology replacement for the schools and a few others that are vehicles. I want town meeting also to keep in mind that there is some ongoing cost to some of these items. When we put on a vehicle, obviously there's maintenance costs, you know, oil changes, routine brakes, tires. So the initial outlay here is for the vehicle itself, but there are ongoing costs for these projects, for these items that are built into the budget of operations.
And so can you tell us about how, like what the total amount of money is and maybe how many projects are under this article?
Sure. So right now, we're looking for about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand, a little bit more than that. And with the limited amount that we had left for free cash, we prioritize that through capital with the CIPC, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, meets with the department heads and the department comes in with their priorities. Then CIPC then again prioritizes those amongst all the other projects that are in town. So these are the short-term projects, one to five years. And these are the items that the committee thought were priority to send to town meeting for a vote.
All right. So it's a process to get these items.
Yes, it's a lengthy process.
It's not just like picking projects out of a hat. It's a real conversation. All right. So Article Nine has to do with paying elected officials, the town clerk in particular. This article looks to give her a three-point-nine percent pay increase. Is this typical for Town Hall employees and how does this compare to town clerks in Dartmouth's comparable communities?
So this article is an annual article at the annual town meeting. And the, you'll see that the bottom portion of this is zero because most of the elected officials in town are not paid. Unlike the town clerk who is voted in and the survey.
And it's a full-time position.
Correct.
So she's at Town Hall about forty hours a week.
And so the survey that's done is based on other communities, comparable communities that the town uses. And that's what's been requested here by the town clerk for fiscal 26. But the analysis was done by the town clerk to look at other communities, liking-kind to Dartmouth, same-size budget, same-size population, and this is what's been recommended.
So Article Ten really gets deep into the town's finances. This is the article for the main town budget for FY26, correct?
Correct.
All right. So can you talk us through a little bit what stands out in this year's budget?
So the budget, if we go back to last year's amount, we then were over a hundred million dollars the first time ever for the town. And this year, we're at a hundred-and-eight million, five-hundred-thousand, thirty-two dollars, which includes a increase of COLA for all the unions, negotiated unions, except the schools. So what that means is in the fall, we won't have to have an article to address that. Usually in the fall, we have because of negotiations. So this is encompassing of all that. It also includes an increase to our health insurance. As you know, health insurance, not only in Dartmouth but across the country, has been pretty much a budget buster. With medical inflation and just a general inflation. It's something that we're tracking, we're trying to get a handle of and try to mitigate going forward. Trying to look at different ways we can do that. But the budget this year is based on, you know, an average of about a fourteen percent increase. We have stagnant state aid. We have a limited amount of revenue from the local receipts, which includes motor vehicle tax, local fines and fees and penalties, investment income. So the budget continues to grow at about three-point-seven percent, anywhere between three-point-five and three-point-seven percent. But we also have to watch the revenue side. You know, as I said, it's a limited amount of money that we can actually generate through taxation. And we have to be able to match that with our expenses. So this year, we worked with the schools on a plan that was to help mitigate the school choice monies. So that's a five-year plan and trying to, you know, wean off of that. And, but I would say the two major concerns with the budget are assessments that we receive from like the county, retirement, and the biggest one now being insurance.
So you started to touch on this a little bit. My next question is about the school budget. So like you mentioned, the school has been using school choice revenues for a few years to cover some reoccurring costs. And that's hard because it's not always guaranteed how much that school choice revenues is going to be. And I know you and Mr. Jim Kylie worked together to come up with a plan to start, like you said, weaning off of that. Could you talk a little bit more specifically about what that plan is and how it's reflected in this budget?
So the school choice on average brings in X amount of dollars to the school department and that depends on how many, that number fluctuates with the number of students we bring in from other communities. And so it's kind of like a moving target going forward. We've had a baseline where we've worked with the schools, I've worked with Jim, Mr. Kylie, and had the, had that annualized for the next five years so that we can build that into the budget and have something that's, we can, the town side can live with. And have them go forward and not have to use the one-time revenues for operations, which is really not something that we should be doing even on the town side. One-time revenues, as I mentioned, free cash, retained earnings.
That's like what we're using for these capital projects.
The capital items, which are one-offs.
Exactly.
Right. We don't want to, we don't want to build it in the budget because eventually what happens is you build structural deficits within the budget if you're doing that. Because that revenue is not guaranteed every single year. So you need a constant stream of revenue in order to build a constant expense within the budget. So that's really what we worked out with the schools.
In this budget, did any town departments request new positions or additional staff?
We added a position called the Floater in the Finance Department. And what that did was that took the Finance, Accounting and Conservation departments into consideration where if there's peak times, if there are times where the, you know, for instance, the Collector's Office is busy with water bills, real estate tax bills at certain times of the year, they're using this individual, they will go to Accounting when they're busy and then Conservation in the meantime. So we're able to find some efficiency with that and move forward. Other departments have requested, you know, employees, new employees. We're taking a careful look at the operations because we want to make sure that we have, again, the funding source to pay for new employees. So that's something that we talk about when we talked about the class and comp study that we're going to be doing to try to remain competitive with other communities. That'll be coming out sometime at the end of this calendar year so that the Board of Selectmen can then analyze what that looks like against our comparable communities. So that's important, that we remain competitive, not only for retention of employees, but for recruitment of employees.
All right. Is there anything else you think town meeting members should know about the budget?
Those are the key highlights of the budget, I think, that, and on the administration side, we're watching these items, as I mentioned, assessments, the insurance, so that it doesn't get out of control where, you know, they become budget busters in the future.
And can you just remind us what happens to any money in the budget that isn't spent?
So any money that comes, any money that's turned back from departments ends up being free cash and then certified in the fall, which we then use again for funding capital requests.
So Article Eleven looks to approve funding for sewer and septic betterments. Before we get too deep into this, can you tell us what a betterment is?
So a betterment is, I'll give you an example. Let's just say that we are putting lines in for either sewer or water. The betterment, the line runs by a property. We then.
So that would be like a sewer line?
A sewer line. We then require the homeowner to hook up and then that is placed on their tax bill over a number of years. So with a small amount of interest, smaller than some of the banks. So that's paid off on a quarterly basis as they pay their bills over a number of years. And so once that betterment is paid off, it's a lien, it's actually a lien on the property. And once that betterment is paid off, there's a release that's recorded so that they're free and clear from any betterment charges that would be on the property. But that's really what a betterment is.
And so now how does that relate to this specific article?
So what this article does is it funds the amount of money that the system, the sewer system needs to produce these betterments. So there's borrowing that's involved, you know, there's interest costs that are involved with this. So this allows us to keep this program going. It's an actual program that we provide to the residents. Where in some instances, you've heard failed septic systems. So, you know, tying into the sewer system allows them to not have that issue in their property.
And now, this article, if I remember correctly, had a pretty high dollar amount. Can you explain where that comes from and what that actually means for the town and the budget?
Yeah, so this money is repaid back.
Yeah.
It's authorization to, you know, borrow up to a certain amount of, up to a certain money, but it's paid back through the betterment system. So the town, at the end of the day, becomes whole once it's paid off.
So it's not like we're just spending this much money. We're loaning it and we're going to get it back plus a little bit of interest.
Right, a little bit, yep.
All right. So the next five articles, Articles Twelve through Sixteen, all seem pretty similar to each other. Are they?
Yes. So these are the Enterprise Fund articles, Water Sewer, DCTV, Waterways, to name a few. And what this does is because these are separate from the budget that we just spoke of, they have their own individual budgets, they certify their own retained earnings, which in essence is their free cash. These are voted separately at town meeting. This is your trash pickup, solid waste, it is your water bill, your sewer bill. DCTV also has their own Enterprise Fund and Waterways also has their own Enterprise Fund.
So if I remember correctly from last year, because this is another reoccurring town meeting article, the DCTV Enterprise Fund is slightly different. Can you explain why that is?
So what happens with the DCTV fund, some, almost like the other, similar to the other enterprise funds, DCTV is sent by the PEG Access user fee. So the more people that sign up for cable in town, the more, the larger that, you know, the funding is for that, which also, you know, funds programs like where we are at right now. And, you know, it's a great program. The funding of that, we've seen over the course of time because, you know, the old adage of, you know, they cut the cord, that's the old cable, cable, you know, verbiage of not using cable anymore, using streaming.
Yeah, the streaming.
Yeah, so, you know, it's something that we have to be cognizant of that, you know, we're going into a time where it's a different platform. But, you know, the service that DCTV provides the town is phenomenal. Not only with programs like this, but educational series, spawning events, I mean, it goes on and on.
My cooking show.
Yes, your cooking show. And I think that, you know, we need to look at and be cognizant that DCTV is a cherished, you know, program and department within the town. And, you know, we hear nothing but positive feedback from the group that's here doing their work.
Absolutely. So we're going to jump ahead to Article Nineteen, which is on page fourteen of the warrant. This article pulls from the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund set up at the last town meeting. This article looks to use four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars towards fire safety capital expenditures at school buildings. Can you talk about the need for this at the schools and the article in general?
Sure. So we had had this on our CIPC short-term capital list for quite some time. There was concerns from the Fire District to have these, the systems upgraded. They were older, as you can imagine. Our schools are, in some instances, older and the technology in those buildings are older. So CIPC decided to use the Long-Term Capital Account, which we set up, I believe, a year ago, funded it with a million dollars for projects like this. And so what this does is, we didn't take it out of the free cash. This is coming out of that fund that we set up and will hopefully mitigate the problem going forward and have that issue addressed at the schools.
Article Twenty dives into a septic replacement or repair program. I have a statement from the town's Director of Health, Chris Michaud, about the article. He said, "Homeowner access to the funding is through the Board of Health for replacement or failed septic systems and connection to sewer. Accessing the funds has the following limitations. First, funding cannot be accessed to increase the number of bedrooms at the property and while the loan remains active, the number of bedrooms cannot be increased. This is a state requirement. This must be a primary resident. It cannot be a commercial property. Funding of the work is paid back over time through the recipient's tax bill. Applicants must be up to date on their taxes and recipients will pay fees and interest on the funding." So this sounds kind of like what we were talking about before with the betterment program where it's going to be a type of loan to get this betterment and then you're going to pay it back through your taxes and.
Yeah, correct. What this does is allow the Board of Health, the Board of Health actually initiates this program. So it allows them to, as you had just gone through the list, ask for the criteria from the homeowner and then decide who's going to get that betterment. That's really what this article does.
So Article Twenty-One establishes a camping bylaw with a general, within the town's general bylaws. Can you give a brief overview of the bylaw and why the town is looking to create it?
So we have a group that's called DSCOT and their focus was homelessness in town. As you know, homelessness has increased not only in Dartmouth, across the country. And what we're trying to do here is through the Council on Aging, through Matt Dozerow, who works closely with the community and has ties to people that are in these situations.
Yeah, he's the, as the outreach coordinator.
Outreach coordinator, correct. So what we wanted, what we wanted to do, what the goal was, is to have, to mitigate the liability of people that are on town property. You know, if someone can get hurt, someone could, there's a number of things that could happen to someone that's on town property. This is not to, more, not so to kick people off town property, but to help them move forward with finding housing, finding other ways than living in the woods, living in their vehicles and parking lots. So that's really what this article was, the genesis of this article was. If you look at other communities in Massachusetts, they've done pretty much the same thing. They're looking to not fine people to death, but, you know, help them along and try to get them into a better situation than what they are. And that's really what the group did.
So Article Twenty-Two seems like it's just a simple verbiage change. Can you explain what's going on here?
So yes, we had a position, we were requesting a position change here from the Personnel Administrator to Human Resources Director. We had the position vacate a few months ago. We have hired a new HR Director. We hired her as a Personnel Director. She starts June second and we're looking to change that and have her be named Human Resources Director, which encompasses much more of the job than just the Personnel Director.
So Article Twenty-Three doesn't seem as simple. So Article Twenty-three doesn't seem as simple. It's a little complicated. What's it looking to do?
So Article Twenty-three and then and then also Article Twenty-four are to address the Heroes Act in Massachusetts. Governor Healy put into law the provision of allowing veterans to earn more exemption on their, on their tax bill. And that's basically what this, what these Twenty-three and Twenty-four articles do. And the veteran population in Dartmouth is, 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 I want to say large, but it's, it's, we have a-
It's substantial. There's certainly a community.
Of veterans. And I think that this allows them to, those that qualify, allows them to earn a little bit more for what, you know, the service they've done for for the country. You know, when we look at these articles, we want to be, we want to look at these as a positive, even though it is a reduction to the to the tax bill, but it does give back to those veterans in town.
We're winding down now. We're on to our final two articles. Article Twenty-five has to do with creating a thirty-year lease for the four oh four Elm Street property here in town. This article, if passed, also requires that the building be used for arts, culture, culture, or civic engagement. Can you tell me what that means for the building?
So if you remember about a year ago now, the Dartmouth Cultural Council and the group came to the Select Board and asked for a one-year lease to get us by until we actually got to Town Meeting. The Dartmouth Cultural Council is an occupant of the building. They, they run a number of programs down there. I've attended a few of them. They're, I think, an asset to that location.
Yeah, they have, I've been to quite a few also. They do, like, lectures, they have gallery showings, they support a lot of local artists, and then they also do classes in the building. So it really brings in a lot of arts and cultures.
Yeah, and 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 it's a great location for them to be there, right in the heart of the Peyton River Village. So this allows for a longer-term lease, which allows them to potentially get grant funding and peace of mind that they're, they're there for a long term, as they've had in the past.
Now, would this article go straight to them, or what would the process be to get a tenant?
So it would have to go through procurement because it is above a certain amount, dollar amount. And that will be worked out through our procurement people. And then, you know, we, we have to do that under the, under the law, so it's, it's, it has to be done. But as I mentioned, the Dartmouth Cultural Council is an asset to the community, not only in that area, but the entire town.
All right. So we're on to our final article, which is Article Twenty-seven. It's a citizen's petition. Can you summarize what this article is asking for? It looks like a long one.
So this article came before Town Meeting, I believe, last year. And as of, as every article has, after Town Meeting votes, it goes to the AG's office for their final review, comes back to the town, and whether or not the article, you know, made the, made it or didn't make it. So last year, they made some recommendations on changing the article and some additional verbiage in here. It's cleaning up the article that was presented to us about a year ago. And this is for Farmer Coast down in the village. So this is just a cleanup article.
So despite it passing at Town Meeting last year, it had to go to the Attorney General's office. It got sent back with some edits, and now-
Town Meeting will vote.
Town Meeting is going to vote again on essentially the same thing, just with a couple of different words. All right. That all sounds really good, really informative. Thank you for being here, Gary, and talking through the, seems like the second half of the warrant, really. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate this. Very nice.
I'm so grateful to all the guests who came to explain these important topics. And thank you to our Town Meeting members and anyone who's interested in the warrant for watching this program. As I said earlier, the meeting is on Tuesday, June third, at nine AM in the High School Auditorium, which is located at five 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 Bakersville Road. There is also the Dartmouth Community Media livestream and recording of the meeting to watch at any time. If anyone has questions on how to watch the meeting or if you would like a copy of the 2025 Spring Town Meeting warrant, visit the Town Clerk's page on the town website. Thank you for watching, and we hope to see you at the meeting.